If everybody would take a seat, we'll get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trent Magid, David Roseacher, Jeffrey Moore, Michael Pate, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Sherri Rockwell, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Eric England, Planning Manager, Mike Carter, Planning Board Administrator, Ellen Thielen from the City Law Department, and Lisa Egans, our Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. This board met this morning and reviewed all cases. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. They're right here. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity of your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda, after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and if you would take time now to turn off your cell phones, that would be appreciated. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. And we don't have any changes to the consent agenda, so I will start with the consent cases. Okay, Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-10-18-100. Applicant Suzanne C. Rittenhouse. This is on consent for approval. Request rezoning from AG and DR to AG and DR. Property is located within a flood fringe overlay district. This was laid over from our July board meeting. Location southeast of 252nd and Blondo Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-8-18-101. Applicant NY Auto Sales. It's on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a GC district. Property is located within an ACI II overlay district. This was laid over from our June board meeting. Location northwest of 71st and Blondo Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-7-18-200. Applicant Robert E. Lorenz. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow body and fender repair services in a DS district. This was laid over from our last month's meeting. Location 1011 North 18th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-11-15-229, C-12-18-208. Applicant Uptown Properties LLC and DBA Uptown Urban Dwellings. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of 33 Mason South Replat 1, a minor plat inside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-8 for A lot depth, and approval of a major amendment to a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location southwest of 33rd and Mason Streets. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-11-15-231, C-12-18-209. Applicant Uptown Properties LLC and DBA Uptown Urban Dwellings. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of 33 Mason North Replat 1, a minor plat inside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-8 for A lot depth, and approval of a major amendment to a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location northwest of 33rd and Mason Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-3-18-210, C-10-18-211, C-12-18-212. Applicant Ryan Lindquist, Alcorn Public Schools. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Ida Point North, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R4, along with a request for a variance to the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. Location southwest of 180th and Ida Street. Anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-11-18-213, C-10-18-214, C-12-18-215. Applicant Miller Commerce. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Lincoln Highway Communities, a subdivision inside the city limits with a rezoning from AG to DR and R6, along with approval of a planned unit development overlay district. Portions of the property are located within a flood fringe and a floodway overlay district. Location northwest of 192nd Street and Honeysuckle Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-3-18-218, C-10-18-219, C-12-18-220. Applicant 20535 Fort LLC. This is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Vestacia, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-8 for D lot frontage, and a rezoning from AG to DR, R4 and R5, along with a request for a variance to the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. Location northwest of 204th and Fort Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-10-18-78, C-12-18-79. Applicant Wish-In-One-Han Enterprises LLC. It is on for layover. Request revised preliminary plat approval of Privata, a subdivision outside the city limits with waivers of Section 53-8 to B cul-de-sac length and Section 53-8 for D lot frontage, along with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R6, R7, and MU, and final plat approval of Privata lots 1 through 178, outlots A through O, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R6, R7, and MU. Location southwest of 204th and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-10-18-222. Applicant Maria Hernandez. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R435 to R4. Location 3723 South 16th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-10-18-223. Applicant Amanda J. Pearson. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R435 to CC, along with approval of an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 3214 Al Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, Case C-10-18-224. Applicant Chad Eicher. It's on for approval. Request rezoning from AG to R2. Location east of 216th Street and Greenbrier Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it will be removed? All right, moving on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, Case C-10-18-225. Applicant Frank Overhew. It's on for approval. Request approval of an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 5646 North 90th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, Case C-7-18-44, C-10-18-226. Applicant David Newbauer. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R4 and GC to R4, along with approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in a R4 district. Location southeast and southwest of 22nd Street and Willis Ave. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-four, Case C-8-18-227, C-10-18-235. Applicant Nate Bus. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow assisted living in a R5 district, along with approval of an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location northwest of 204th Street and George B. Lake Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do, sir? Okay. Moving on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-six, Case C-8-18-229. Render Group LLC doing business as Comfort Care. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in a R1 district. Location 2315 South 168th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay? We will do so. Agenda Item Number Twenty-six. Moving on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven, Case C-8-18-230, C-10-18-236. Applicant Big O Auto. It is on for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to a special use permit assumed to allow automotive sales in a GC district, along with approval of an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 1907 North 85th Street and 8431 Blondo Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight, Case C-8-18-231. Applicant Clinton R. Pertle. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow agricultural sales and services in a AG district. Property is located in a flood fringe overlay district. Location 1701 North 252nd Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine, Case C-7-18-232, C-10-18-237. Applicant Karen Christian Revival Church. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in a R3 district with a waiver of Section 55-166, height to allow for a church and a cross up to 54 feet tall, along with approval of an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 6010 North 49th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. The final case. Agenda Item Number Thirty, Case C-7-18-233. Applicant Eric Weisler. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit for a site over one acre in size in the South 10th Street NCE District. Location southeast of 10th and Pear Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Okay, those are the consent cases. Do we have a motion for cases on consent for approval?
I move for approval of Agenda Items 2, 3, 4, 11, 12, 13, 16, 19, 20, 22, 23, 28, 29, and 30.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for consent items on for layover?
I move for layover of Agenda Items 14, 27, and 17.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Roseacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Before we get into the agenda, any of those cases that were just approved on the consent agenda are done for the day. If you were here for one of those cases, you can stick around, or you are free to leave. It's up to you. The cases that were taken off of consent will be heard in the regular order. I'm gonna get a drink of water. First case is administrative meeting only, meaning there will be no opportunity for public testimony. It is Agenda Item Number One, Case C-10-18-126, C-12-18-127. Applicant Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes Omaha. Request final plat approval of Somerset 2, lots 101 through 206, formerly Somerset, lots 629 through 730, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from DR to R4. Location southeast of Winninghoff Road and State Street. May we hear from the city?
Sure. This request is the second phase of Somerset 2, which was originally the seventh phase of Somerset Development many years ago. The site consists of approximately 22 acres of land, can be subdivided and rezoned for 105 single-family residential lots and associated right-of-way. There will be some street improvements to Winninghoff Road and State Street. Otherwise, it's pretty standard final plat. The department recommends approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the four conditions listed in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the four conditions outlined by the Planning Department in the recommendations before forwarding to City Council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, for the next Agenda Item Number Five and Fifteen, Chris, are you going to recuse yourself?
I've taken it together.
Okay, let the record show that Chris Carnes has recused and left the chambers. Agenda Item Number Five, Case C-3-18-203. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the Courtyard on Park Townhomes TIF redevelopment project plan. Location 1007 Park Ave. And Eric, do you want me to read Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda Item Fifteen, Case C-11-18-216, C-12-18-217. Applicant Larry Jensen. Request preliminary plat approval of Courtyard on Park, a subdivision inside the city limits, with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location 1007 Park Ave. May we hear from the city? Don?
Yes, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project is property located just south of Leavenworth on Park Avenue. Proposal is for new construction. These would be for-sale, market-rate townhomes. The 12 townhome units range in two buildings with a courtyard between them. Parking will be provided on-site with a garage underneath each unit. The access is off an alley on the eastern edge of the property, which includes alley improvements by the applicant, as well as allows opportunity for additional streetscaping and landscaping along South Park Avenue. The design of the project has been coordinated with the City Planning Urban Design Staff and is viewed very favorably for its design with the courtyard and the extra landscaping. Developer is Milestone Property LLC. They have done a number of projects in Omaha. One of the more recent ones is a West Farnham Apartment Rehab project, which was a recent TIF project as well. Site is near the Hanscom Apartments and some newer townhomes to the north. Total project investment represents an investment of $3.6 million in the neighborhood. The TIF support requested is $584,778. This project meets the required criteria for the TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for this location and complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Don? Is the applicant for number Fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Seaton, as usual, did a great job describing the project, so I won't repeat that, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents that wish to speak? Come on up. Make sure you give your name and address, please.
My name is Bonnie Urbonic. U-R-V-A-N-E-K, and I reside at 1017 South 30th Avenue. I'm not necessarily an opponent, but I'm really concerned about the density increase that we're seeing in that neighborhood in parking. Parking is a, and it's becoming a public safety issue because there's been so much redevelopment in that neighborhood. People are parking any place that they can find spots that aren't legal spots, and getting anything resolved, you know, they, yeah, they can come out and ticket them and tow them, but it really doesn't resolve the issue. There were rules put in place that they have to have 1.5 spots per unit, and these have been waived over and over and over in this neighborhood, and we're reading a critical mass. If I need a rescue squad or a fire truck, they're simply not going to be able to get there. They're, I don't have any issue with the quality or the people he attracts because they're great, and I've been a longtime resident. I've been there in my house for 26 years. So if you solve the parking problem, I have no objections, but you've got to, you can't keep waiving the 1.5 requirement because it's just, it's going to create a huge public safety issue.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you. I live at 1017 South 30th Avenue.
So kind of right next door, then, or just a couple?
They're going to be across Park Avenue from me.
Okay.
So, but it's, there's so many things that are being redeveloped in that neighborhood, and I drive up and down Park Avenue every single day to come to work, and it's already pretty parked full, and the apartments on the west side of the street that Urban Villages redeveloping are empty right now. They do have parking in the back, and that is right, my garage is on that. It's kind of, it's actually South 30th Street. It looks like an alley.
And do most of the homes in that area have drives with garages, or is it mostly street parking?
It's about half and half. I do have a garage, but if I, if I am having trouble, if you go north towards Mason, there's a, there's a curb there, and people are parking along that curb, and there's not supposed to be people parking there. And Larry is, he does great work. I love what he puts in. He attracts good quality tenants, but the parking is, we got, we got to quit waiving this, because I've lived there when you couldn't drive up and down these streets. And if you try to go down 33rd now, when people aren't at work, if you have, if a fire truck has to get through, I don't know how they're going to get through. I don't know how the garbage trucks get through. I have a little bitty car, and I'm fine, but, and you can't meet a car, because one of you has to back up if you meet a car, because there's not, there's not room for two people to pass each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Are there any- Thank you, Bonnie. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Did you want to come back up and discuss parking?
Sure. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, seventeen hundred Farnham Street, on behalf of the applicant. Appreciate the comments of the neighbors. This project is not asking for a parking waiver of any kind. It provides two off-street parking spaces in independent garages for each of the twelve proposed units, with an opportunity for a third parking space for each unit parked in a tandem fashion. So this, this project really completely takes care of its own, you know, parking needs that it may generate. Most of these units are two bedrooms, so we've got even more than the one and a half space per unit. We've got one per bedroom and maybe even more than that with this project, again, in these garages that are independently accessible from the alley.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I just personally like to make a comment on the, what we see is kind of preliminary design, but it really looks very consistent with that vintage of that neighborhood, and I commend you for that. I like the looks of it.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, Eric, can we hear on agenda item number fifteen, city's recommendations?
Well, let's start with agenda item number five.
Okay.
C-three eighteen dash two zero three, the city recommends approval.
Okay. You want to take a motion on this one? All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yep.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda item number fifteen.
Sure, just to reiterate what Mr. Levy had said, the site, or this development would meet the required parking stalls on their site. Department recommends approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the six conditions listed in the recommendation report, and approval of the P.U.R. subject to submittal of acceptable revised P.U.R. plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or a motion?
I move approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the six conditions outlined in the department's recommendations.
Second.
We have a, that's just part of the...
And then I'll make the subsequent motion to approve the P.U.R. subject to the submittal of acceptable revised P.U.R. plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number six, case C-three dash eighteen dash two oh four. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the Elliott Equipment Company TIF redevelopment project plan. Location thirty-five fourteen South Twenty-Fifth Street. Don, may we hear from the city, please?
Yes, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This TIF project plan proposes the renovation of a pair of existing industrial buildings. It's at a site near the point where the Kennedy Freeway, I-80 and I-480 all come together to the northwest quadrant of that large intersection. This will allow Elliott Equipment to consolidate their operations at a single site while also expanding their operations. Presently, they are located in five separate buildings on three sites in central Omaha. And this will allow them to get it kind of all together on one site. Elliott Equipment is a manufacturer. They make truck-mounted aerial work platforms like cranes and digger derricks. Presently, they employ a hundred seventy people. Those jobs will be retained, and they plan to expand by another forty or fifty employees. There's parking on-site. The smaller building to the north is a hundred six, sixty-seven, no, pardon me. The building on the north is forty-two thousand square feet. That'll be renovated for their headquarters and offices, a break room for the employees. The larger building, existing building to the south, will be renovated and revamped for their factory operations. That building's a hundred sixty-seven thousand square feet. Elliott Equipment Company is the project applicant. They're represented by Jamie Hudson. Total project cost is thirteen point seven million dollars. They are requesting one million, one hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred eight dollars in TIF support. Project meets the required criteria for the city TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the location, and the project also complies with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Okay. Any questions of Don? Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brent Beller, one one four four West Center Road. With me today is Jim Glazer, the CEO, and Jamie Hudson, the CFO of Elliott Equipment Company. They're pretty excited about this opportunity to come down here. Obviously, it's, it's a, well, the visuals from this site are pretty appealing. But in addition to the employment opportunities, so with this kind of concentration of all their operations on the one site, it's not going to allow for them to be more of an efficient company, but it's going to allow them to grow substantially. So forty to fifty jobs over the course of the next few years. Those are income levels in the trades, at least of an average of sixteen, eighteen dollars an hour. So it provides a company that's been in Omaha since nineteen forty-eight an opportunity to continue to grow, continue to concentrate their uses down here. Just real quick, just a quick summary as to what they're doing. A lot of this project is interior remodeling, fabrication of what they do. We have right away up here, South Twenty-Fifth Street here, a lot of their intake is actually, just to correct Don a little bit, their intake is going to be in this building here, so as their fabrication for all their cranes and operations come in, they'll come into this building. They'll service down to the larger building where's, where a lot of the painting, the manufacturing, the welding takes place. And then their business and their operations, office headquarters will be in this other location. So pretty exciting project for them. From my standpoint, obviously, I'm probably a little biased. Pretty cool for the city of Omaha to have a homegrown company and utilize TIF or something like this. So with that, we're here for any questions, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the Elliott and the Glazer family, Jim and John and the whole family, have done a wonderful thing, and they've grown, as you said, a homegrown company. And taking a building that is a very visible building and repurposing it and improving it is a wonderful thing. So I thank them for growing our Omaha businesses.
I think it's worth noting, too. So the company that was there, a hundred fifty-five jobs were lost when they vacated this premises. So bringing jobs, bringing more jobs, that's kind of the goal of this project.
I'd also like to comment, just thanking for, the company's the same age as I am, so. And I like to see, you know, we use TIF for a lot of different things, and as with what Trenton said, it's nice to see a company that got their start here. As they continue to grow and have success, that they choose this location to, to be able to continue their growth. And it's an opportunity for us as part of the city with the TIF opportunity to be able to help you with that process.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Just, I'm all on board with this project. It's a great project, but I just have a question on the new market tax credits. Have you applied for those and actually received them?
They are quickly learning, so we're in full go of that project. So the goal is to actually close on, so we have an allocation, both federal and state, which is, if you do new market projects, you know that that's difficult to do, but that's how cool this project is. So they got an allocation, both federal and state. They hope to close on that financing yet this year.
Okay.
So it's full go on getting that all done.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks. Good project.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Okay, he's not coming for that. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions, before we hear from Eric? We've already heard from the city. Eric, you want to add anything?
Department recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Lisa, we have a motion and a second. Will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number seven, case C-three dash eighteen dash two oh five. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the Ainsworth and Beverly Apartments TIF redevelopment project plan. Location twenty-two thirty and twenty-two thirty-six Jones Street. Don, you're up again.
All right. Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project involves a comprehensive rehabilitation of two identical four-story brick historic buildings. They're apartment buildings historically, located in the kind of southwest portion of downtown. Kind of an area that has not, maybe seen quite as much economic reinvestment as other parts of the central business district. It's located a block north of Leavenworth and straight west of the Drake Court Apartments. The buildings are certified historic structures, originally constructed as apartments. The owner intends to use historic preservation tax credits for the project as well. There is, you know, the buildings occupy the entire site, so there's no room for parking on-site. The project developer-owner has other properties in the area and can make some parking available, and then there's on-street parking. I should also note that the, the applicant has recently applied for rezoning to CBD, Central Business District. And they are also, with this project, greatly reducing the number of parking, or pardon me, reducing parking demand by reducing the number of apartments in the two buildings. They were originally constructed with seventy-four units between the two buildings. There will be thirty-three units when the project is completed. The owner-developer is Anderson Apartments LLC. Dave Palladino, manager. Total project cost is three point two million, a little, little north of three point two million dollars. The TIF support requested is two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. This project meets the criteria for the city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for this part of downtown, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Yes, my name's Dave Palladino, the property owner, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Need your address, Dave.
Oh, yeah. Twenty-seven oh two Douglas.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Any questions, comments? Okay, are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing.
Department recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number eight, case C-three dash eighteen dash two oh six. Marcy Mason LLC is the applicant, request approval of a local landmark designation automobile sales building and Army Corps laboratory. Location four twenty South Eighteenth Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Bob Perrin, I'm the manager of Marcy Mason LLC that owns the property, eleven oh one South Thirty-Sixth Street. This is a building that's kind of been hiding in plain sight for almost a hundred years, ninety-eight years. Was built in nineteen twenty as an automobile dealership and served that until nineteen forty-eight. I have a few pictures of it. These work, okay? Some of these are new that are not in the packet. This was when the building was originally started, and its initial tenant was Nebraska Oldsmobile Company. That's nineteen twenty. Then in nineteen, and then it went through a couple other renditions. Went through McCaffrey Ford, and it went through Miller Canute Chevrolet, and that's what's here in nineteen forty-two, I think that was. And you can see the building, and our intention is to bring the building back in the exact same shape that it was when it was built in nineteen twenty. This building, we're also very lucky to have pictures of the inside of the building. This picture was taken in nineteen thirty-five. This picture was taken in nineteen thirty, and the things inside the building are most identical to the way they were when it was built in nineteen twenty. This is a unique building because it served the automobile industry from nineteen twenty to nineteen forty-eight, at which time the Army Corps of Engineers or the Army Corps bought it and maintained it until twenty-ten. So for the first tenants, it was all automobiles, and there was no adjustments to the building whatsoever, except for signage on the outside describing which dealer owned it. And then from forty-eight on, it became the Corps' property, and they didn't do anything with the inside either. And so one of the inside pictures we have that's really unique, that shows the dramatic nature of the inside of the building, even though it was a very simple building, was built for, for an industrial use, commercial use. This building was taken on the second floor in December of nineteen thirty. You'll see up in the corner, there's an air vent that's bent a little bit. That air vent is still there, and it's still bent today. So we're talking eighty years later. The inside, the building, is still the same. The other pictures we have, this is another one on the second floor. This, this shows a tambor door, steel door dividing the parts department. The chain is still there, the colors are still there, and this pipe in the back wall is still there. It's really rare. I've been doing architects for almost fifty years with preservation projects. I have never seen a building like this, that's in this condition. Inside, and actually, the outside's even better because when the, in nineteen, in the late nineteen seventies, the Corps put aluminum all over the windows. They put insulated panels in where the windows were. So they preserved it even more, which is why when we all walked by, we didn't see it. We just, we focused on the Flatiron Hotel across the street, or the courthouse on the other side of the street. We just walked by this building as if it was a hidden corridor. But luckily, with the research that we've been doing lately, the last three or four years, we've discovered that it's an absolute gem. It's intact. Inside and outside has only had two tenants and is, and is ripe for, to bring back into our historic old quality of our, of our community. And it's also part of the district. I can also tell you that I've been involved in preservation since seventy-five. And the latest map, I've done several maps of historic properties. This was in a book that Landmarks published in two thousand eight. And this is the one of just the downtown Corps. We thought that we had discovered every historic building that there was in Omaha. A team of us went through the city. This building's not on it. Neither is the Redfield Building down the street. Neither was Automobile Row on the Twenty-fourth Street. So this is our chance to recognize that as life goes on, we find up, we find more things of value as the layers of that onion are peeled back. And this building is in pristine condition. It's the strongest building I have ever worked on, mostly because it's, it was in the transition period from when we went from concrete to reinforced concrete to steel. So the inside of the building has columns every twenty-five feet that are forty-two inches in diameter. Those are gigantic columns. Ten years later, those columns would have been twelve inches in diameter. It would have been steel. In fact, I've done buildings in the old market that that's exactly what we have. So we don't build buildings like this anymore. The floors are solid concrete, and, and everything's in great condition. So we're anxious to bring it back into being what it was and to allow its place as a part of the history fabric for our city to be maintained. So I ask for your approval to do that, recognition that we do have an historic property that we just didn't know about.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So what, what, how's it currently being used right now?
Right now, we're using it for research. We're doing restoration of building parts on the inside. We're doing paint sampling. We're doing building restoration. We have lots of wood in there that we've salvaged from other properties that we're removing the nails from, we're straightening and putting them together. We're redoing a bunch of windows for an historic church inside. We have some scientists that are doing research on audiovisual type stuff inside.
And how long have you owned it?
Five years.
Five years. And you have different intentions on how to use the building, and how you're going to use the building going forward, then?
Yes. Actually, this, during the process of this initial ownership, we thought we would just renovate it right away until we started discovering the historic nature of it. And in fact, we started, we hauled out about a hundred dumpsters of trash from the building because it was really destroyed inside. And one of the dumpsters had a small blue piece of paper sticking out of it, so we grabbed the paper, pulled it up, and discovered it was a plan that the Corps had drawn in nineteen forty-eight. And so we carefully pulled it out and saw more plans. We found a set of about twenty-five sheets of drawings drawn in nineteen forty-eight that have never seen the light of day because there's still the pristine blue that was done at that time. And when you expose those papers, which many to know, to light, they turn white right away. These things are bright blue. And so that kind of changed our tune. So we slowed down and went through, what?
Were the plans of the building?
Of the building. Yeah, the other unique thing about this property is that we not only have the architectural plans, we have fourteen sheets of architectural original plans. These came from the city's website, their storage facility. We also have nine plans of the engineering drawings in the building. Yeah, these are the original, these are the plans that the Corps did in nineteen forty-eight. You can see the color. If I leave them outside, they'll, they'll turn white. So, so the engineering plans are something that I have never seen. All the people I've worked with have never seen the engineering drawings. All the people I've worked with have never seen the engineering drawings that describe how much steel is in each column, what the spacing is, what the size. And so with that, when we discovered those plans, then the engineers went back and started looking at it and said, "You can add more floors to the building." And so that's when we stopped, and now we're in the process of knowing kind of what we want to do with that. But the first step is to make the building an historic property, and to recognize its value not only as a building and an exact example of the commercial style of architecture, but also of its use to the community. Because you should know, the Corps developed the Sloan-Pick Plan, which was the flood control plan of the Missouri that was developed. And so we're all benefiting from the work that the Corps did in there.
So how quickly are you planning then to, because the report here says the first or the upper level floors will be converted to multifamily or apartments, and then the lower level will be retail. How quickly will you plan on converting it to that type of use?
Well, we were just, we were just at the process of finishing the working drawings, and we thought we'd have it done in a year and a half or so. That was our intention. We've had a few setbacks, but we're working through them, and hopefully we can get that resolved. But even then, it doesn't deny the fact that the building's historic, and it's valuable to us, no matter who owns it. It should be preserved, and it should be brought back to its original condition.
What architectural style is it?
Commercial, 19th century commercial.
Seriously?
Started in 1890, and actually, that was the development of the skyscraper style that came out of it. Plain, simple windows, vertical and horizontal bands, solid, simple structure. And that style actually started out, we had ornate architecture, we had several ornate examples in the city. This one has some terracotta on it. It's probably 20% decorative. It's not 100% like the Redfield Building, but it was built later. And as you go on through life, we started dropping ornamentation. So this was a change in life, a change in architectural styles for us. This is right on track.
How unique is it in Omaha?
We don't have any other buildings like it that I know of. And I only know of one other building, and that's the JP Cook Building, that still has the original occupants in it, still original use. So that's amazing. What a gem. Yeah, we are very fortunate to have a structure like this in the city.
How long do you think it'll take you to restore the building, to what you want to do with it?
Well, if we could progress today, we'd have it done in a couple of years. It'd all be done.
With the multifamily and then retail on the first floor, is that what your thoughts are?
Yes, right. Well, we've put parking in the basement. Yeah, it also has a large parking garage. The basement ceiling is 15 feet in one section, 12 in another. That's an enormous basement. First floor has 18-foot ceilings. It's almost two floors. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Please give your name and address.
Sorry, I've written my remarks here, if you'll allow me. Yeah, good afternoon. My name's Dr. Scott Williams, 1139 South 93rd Avenue, here in Omaha, Nebraska. Members of the board, I'd like to speak in support of the local landmark designation for the automobile sales building and the Army Corps Laboratory located at 420 South 18th Street. The recognition and protection of buildings, the physical places which comprise our city's history, is essential to maintaining the vibrancy of our city's future. I was born and raised in Omaha, graduated Westside High School, class of 2000. Though I may not look like what you have in mind, that does make me a millennial, so I'll stay off your lawn. I studied engineering at Iowa State University, earned my bachelor's degree and my PhD. My career in scientific research led me to Los Alamos, New Mexico, Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore, and even as far away as a postdoctoral research position at Helmholt-Schengen in Berlin. I've traveled and lived in a variety of urban and metropolitan communities across the nation and around the world. Four years ago, I had the opportunity to return to Omaha. As a university professor, I've taught courses in sustainability and renewable energy. I consider myself a young professional, and while I don't necessarily represent any particular group, I believe that my views are representative. One of the most essential elements of a dynamic community is a place where young professionals want to live, is a vibrant city center. This was most clear to me in Berlin. It's also transparently clear in Baltimore as well. You'll recognize those are both cities, communities, that were built on a much longer history of organized and permanent development than our own city. Baltimore goes back hundreds of years, Berlin even farther than that. Respecting and protecting historic landmarks creates places where people want to be, where people want to live and work and play. Structural history is a finite resource. It's as fragile to us, as delicate, as scarce, as clean air or clean water or land, right? To borrow a phrase, they just don't make them like they used to. I'll defer to Bob, an expert in architecture, to describe the architectural features of the building to you, and he's done a nice job of that. And this is actually the first time that I've been able to see those plans. That's a fantastic scarce resource in and of itself, to be able to have information about the history of a building like that. That's just not available for other places in our community. When historic buildings are removed, there is no recovery. There is no going back. A part of our city's history is lost forever. And so I respectfully ask you to help protect our city's places. I'd ask you to vote to support the local landmark designation of this unique gem that is the automobile sales building that's at 420 South 18th Street. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. Kathleen Jamrosi, 1614 South 93rd Avenue. And I have owned and operated the Flatiron Cafe at 17th and Howard, a block from the Perrin Building, for 23 years. And that building was invisible to me. It is no longer invisible. I have been inside the building. I have seen the early photographs that Bob shared. I am the neighborhood trash picker-upper. Howard Street forms kind of a wind tunnel. And so I've walked that neighborhood many times for many years, picking up trash and waiting for what was the blighted designation, and I'm not sure if that neighborhood is still designated blighted, but it was when I moved in. And I had people tell me I was nuts to go downtown. Well, I've raised a family there, I have children, I'm an old professional. The young professionals, I've got some young professionals working for me that live in the neighborhood and want to stay in the neighborhood. My kids are running the place, and I would like to ask that you seriously consider the wisdom of what Bob described and what Scott described as this important building, maybe unlike any other building we have in the city, as a part of a neighborhood that is quite possibly, now that we are, we risk losing something valuable, we really have a lot of enthusiasm for revitalizing a neighborhood that is the Flatiron District, that does have historical significance. And I learned over the years from people that the Flatiron Hotel, the Hotel Flatiron, was nearly knocked down three times. The Wiseman family saved it in the 80s, and I think it is now saved forever. But I have a detail of that building that a photographer took in the 70s, and it is boarded up and broken and forgotten and almost gone. And now people are sort of like, how could we have ever considered tearing down the Hotel Flatiron? Because it's a much-loved building and an important part of our neighborhood and our city. And so I would just ask that you please consider the landmark designation for 420 South 18th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hello? My name is Carol Zechek, and I live in the Benson area.
Do you have an address?
2518 North 64th Street. And my home is actually built in 1918, and my house has historical significance to Omaha, and it just makes me so passionate about trying to save the building on 420 South 18th Street. I have incredibly bizarre, interesting, unique architectural features in my house that you will not find in homes that are built today. Any buildings that are built today, they're all kind of cookie press, and when I look at the Perrin Building, I just marvel at what an absolute treasure it is for Omaha to have. Once again, historically, looking at a lot of the Thomas Kimball buildings around the city of Omaha makes me proud to be in Omaha. When I look at the Perrin Building, I'm very, very proud to be there. And to think that, you know, if it's not considered a landmark, that would be a travesty because it really is just a treasure that we should keep and preserve. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Does any, are there going to be any other proponents that wish to speak? If there are, you can come down now and have a seat. Okay.
Maria Fernandez, 1101 Jackson, Omaha. I believe I wrote a letter last night to Mr. Carter, and he said he was going to print it up and share it with the rest of the board. If you've received it, I won't repeat myself, except to reiterate the fact that, that the people before me have stated. I am, I love modern architecture, but I love preservation even more. I hope my kids won't discard me just because I'm old. As I said in my letter to you, what defines a city is its history. Just knocking everything down to build new is not the way to go. Yes, we have room for the new, which we're seeing a lot of on the north side of Dodge, and we have a lot that's old on the south side of Dodge. I'm not sure I'm quite taken with what I'm seeing on the north side of Dodge. There's lots of new buildings coming up. To me, they seem faceless. I don't know if in 50 years they would even be standing, or if they will have a story to tell. But I have been through Bob's building several times now, and every time I go in there, there's something even more fascinating. I walk, I have walked for the past eight weeks to this location, looking at things between the old market and the Flatiron District, as I like to call it. New York does not have the corner on it. There's potential out there for significant growth and development, a huge tax base that we need to take advantage of. And landmark buildings like the Flatiron, the Perrin, and several others in the area are what will be the anchors of another destination like the old market. So please give the Perrin Building consideration for its beautiful bones and the potential of what it can do, not just for itself, but for the city of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Dave?
I'd like to make comments. Obviously, my career has been building buildings, and for over 45 years, I've built buildings, and I've seen some of them torn down, and that's kind of pulls at your heartstrings. But the thing that bothers me is, in a lot of cases, what a couple of witnesses have mentioned, is good old buildings get torn down. I cherish the character that are built in some of those buildings today. A lot of times, we can't spend that kind of money on the, some of the appearance, if you will. So when you see an old building that has character, whether it's a building you particularly like or not, is really irrelevant. They have character. And to me, it's a valid thing for us to consider opportunities to be able to protect them. And some of my historical renovations, I've very, I've had tremendous struggles with buildings because of how they had been changed, as Bob indicated, over time, which really tied your hands as far as what you could do in the future. Additionally, there's problems with meeting current codes and things like that. But this building, I've been in it and understand that building. It's a, it's a great palette, if you will, to be able to do something. It's structurally sound, it's got its own character, but it's got the flexibility for it to become a vibrant part of the downtown. And so I really think it's worth our consideration as a landmark to be able to help preserve that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any other comments, questions, before we hear from the city? Eric?
I just wanted to point out that this request went to Landmarks Heritage Preservation Commission on August 8, 2018, and was recommended for approval. The request meets the proposed standards for designation to be designated as local landmark, and we recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number nine, case C3-18-207, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. Request approval of an inter-local cooperation agreement between the Village of Bennington and the city of Omaha regarding an adjustment to the extraterritorial jurisdiction and the associated master plan amendment. Location, generally north of Military Road between 138th Street and 180th. Erica, you representing the city?
Yes.
On this, our campaign.
So this request would be an agreement between the Village of Bennington and the city of Omaha to adjust the extraterritorial jurisdiction boundary of both communities, basically the zoning jurisdiction and who has permission to, or the approval of building permits and such within each jurisdiction. This originally came about, there was a proposed subdivision in Platt lying within a portion of both Bennington and Omaha's jurisdiction. So we've been working with the applicants of that project extensively, and as a result, we decided to take a larger look and take that opportunity to adjust the jurisdiction line between the two entities. The future land use map would be modified with the new boundary, and new areas brought into Omaha's jurisdiction would be designated by the adjacent land use designation, in this case, low-density residential and open space. The agreement would allow development in this area to occur in an orderly fashion, and will continue a long-held partnership between the two communities.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Omaha Planning Board, my name is Jim Lang, 133040 California Street here in Omaha. I'm an attorney representing Frank Crecci. Frank Crecci is developing a parcel at 168th and Bennington Road, and that, the parcel, as Eric said, was in two jurisdictions. I really want to compliment the city for working with the city of Bennington to adjust the ETJ line, so that now this parcel lies only within the city of Bennington, which makes it much easier for us to move forward with our development. So once again, I want to compliment the city Planning Department for working with the city of Bennington on this, and recommend we support this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board? You want to restate your recommendation?
Well, I guess just one other thing I didn't mention is that the swap does include nearly identical amount of acreage for developable ground for both Bennington and Omaha, and the department recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. See, Jim. We're going to take items 10... See, Jim, we're going to take items 10 and 18 together. Agenda item number 10, case C-3-18-234. Applicant, Bucks Inc., doing business as Buchanan Energy, request approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential to office-commercial and to change the boundary of the mixed-use area. Location: 106 South 50th Street. And agenda item number 18, case C-10-18-221. Bucks Inc., doing business as Buchanan Energy, request rezoning from R3 and GC to GC and approval of an expansion to the ACI-2 overlay district. Portion of the property is in an ACI-2 overlay district. Location: 5003 Dodge Street and 106 South 50th Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ryan Glenn with Hush Blackwell Law Firm, 13330 California Street, Suite 200 in Omaha, Nebraska, here as representation for Bucks Inc. Today, I would like to share my time with the owner of Bucks, Steve Buchanan. He's here today in order to provide a brief history of the subject property and further provide you details for any possible improvement on the property. I'd like to turn it over to Steve now.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm Steve Buchanan, 5001 Dodge Street. So I'm not a public speaker, so I'll do my best. So I bought this store back in 1979 when I was 19 years old. So I've been there for 40 years. And through changes in history, we had purchased this building right here to allow us to have more parking, which was on the 40th, 50th Avenue Street, which you can't see, I'm sorry, but it's up in that area there. So through history, we had outgrown our little parking stall here. We'd purchased this building for more parking over here. And then, as time came along, I moved my office to this building here, and we moved our parking over here. So we sold this building over here. So as the company grew, we outgrew our parking stalls. And during this time, this house became available for sale. Sally and I had made arrangements for her to buy that house because along the side here, there was a retaining wall. And that retaining wall was about 80 years old. So it was about $80,000 to have that retaining wall replaced. Part of the issue was tank encroachment and even just being able to do the retaining wall because of the lack of access behind the store. So I purchased our house, we filled out flat, put in a fence. And then, in '07, we asked for, I believe, zoning to park more cars there because we ran out of parking over here. And then, during that timeframe, we decided not to zone it. During that time, my dad died, my mom passed away, and so I just let that go. And during that timeframe, we've had a lot of instances where the car wash, which enters from the back, we had customers driving over the grass and getting stuck and running into objects. So we poured some concrete to have access in the back, and that was a mistake, and I take full responsibility of that. Got some bad advice from my in-house counsel. So I'm here today to ask forgiveness for doing that and then to see if the neighborhood would allow us to extend that entrance around that rear access point so we can have cars enter safely. And that's it.
Steve, what was the advice of your in-house counsel here that...
Well, he made a mistake. He felt that since there was a house there, it was okay to pour driveway there. And that was a mistake because what we did is we joined residential with commercial to drive back and forth on, and I wasn't worried about it.
You didn't get a permit for that driveway that you...
And we're willing to pay for our mistakes and permits. He didn't think we had to have a permit since there was a driveway there of smaller length.
Okay.
Purchased in '06.
When did you put the drive-in?
Four months ago.
What was your intention when you purchased the property back in '06?
It was, so it was just for the retaining wall only. Because of the retaining wall issues, there was no way, it was an 80-year-old tie wall, and it had to have been replaced. I had no way to replace that tie wall without disturbing her house or pulling gas tanks out that are already there. They've been in there since the 60s. And so I had a lot of lotline obligations that couldn't be dealt with.
And how long's the car wash building been there? And the car wash itself been there, I should say?
1969.
The car wash?
Yes.
And historically, the cars have all entered through the back there without that drive and just been able to pull into the car wash then?
Correct. Yeah, there might have been an entrance from the front back in the early 70s. But since I've owned it, it's been in the back.
And did you get any engineering to show the turn radius into the car wash? Or was that even not thought of, do you know, at that point?
Yeah, back in those days, we didn't think like that.
The property that's in color, the expansion property where you have the driveway, that sits about five feet above the residential to the south?
Yeah, we, since the retaining wall that we didn't have to replace, we just filled that in, we revised that with the retaining wall on the southern part.
Is there like a privacy fence there now, too?
There is.
So when cars come in, if they use that concrete, their lights or their noise is pretty much sheltered by that fence and...
I think for the most part, I know we've discussed with the Dundee people that we would change that fence out to a tighter fence. I think there's one that slats in it. We would tighten that up and replace that fence so there's no lights that would shine.
What does the neighbor said, the immediate neighbor to the south? Are they concerned about it? Are they, have you had any conversations with them?
We have, and she's not concerned with it, that we know of.
She's okay if you got permission to do what you want to do?
Yes, that's what she's told us.
Okay.
Any other questions for Steve?
Well, as Steve mentioned to you, this property was the first station of all of the Buckeyes, and so it definitely serves some particular sentimental value to the property owner. He does not desire for this property to be expanded beyond what it already is. So it serves an important part to the community because it has automobile repair services in addition to just getting your daily dose of gas for your vehicle. He prefers for it to remain small, the small mom-and-pop-style service station that currently serves the neighborhood residents. And I think that's important to note because we have had a couple of different town hall meetings with the neighborhood residents of Dundee and representatives of the Dundee Memorial Park Association who have relayed to us that their concern is that this is just a tipping point for Steve to be able to expand his existing footprint and build a major Bucky's convenience center that you see throughout the city. That's ultimately absolutely not the case. And to rebuild that trust that is somewhat lacking with the neighborhood residents, Bucks has proposed to the neighbors, and we submitted a copy to Mr. Carter with the city this morning, a proposed development agreement that would tie Bucky's hands in perpetuity to not expand the existing structure beyond what it is currently. And a copy of the rendering that you have received in your packet is exclusively the plans that Bucky's has for this facility. And it is intentionally done so in order to reface the existing structure to blend in with the community. It goes back to that old 1930s, 1940s exterior service station that we feel would be a good addition to the Dundee historical preservation community feel. I do have copies of the proposed development agreement in case it is not in your packet, and so I would request to be able to approach the planning board and disperse copies.
Please.
Ryan, without seeing that yet, what if he sold the property? Does that prohibit anybody else from doing any further giant gas stations, quick trips or what have you there?
Yes, it does. It does. And that is why we feel that this is a very positive step forward in order to rebuild the trust with the neighborhood residents and with the city, frankly, to avoid the argument, I guess, or alleviate the concern with the city that urban sprawl will just continue. This was in the city's packet that you received, in which case they recommended denial. And so, as you can see, our subject property is right here. And in fact, just one block over, you can see where there's also general commercial property that is, that's further into the residential neighborhood along Dodge Street. And so we really feel that this is simply a fix to a problem, meaning we're conforming with the existing use that has been there since 2007 when that residential structure was torn down. I want to briefly talk about why we submitted the request to go for GC, but I can take your comment.
Real quick, back up the sentence you just said. You said you've been in conformance since the house was torn down?
No, if I, with respect to the existing use of the property. And so we are not proposing some new use on the subject parcel. It's going to continue to just be utilized in order to provide access to the car wash.
Isn't that a change in conformance?
With respect to the zoning classification, which is why we're trying to fix that issue today.
Okay, good, keep going.
And I wanted to step back just a moment. Steve had mentioned to you, and I think the question was, when this was initially designed, was, has that been utilized to turn into the car wash? Yes, it has, with the exception of the fact that many of the Bucky's customers were making this wide-range turn radius and ripping up the sod, ripping up the sprinkler systems on the property, which is why Bucks ultimately decided to go ahead and pour this concrete in order to repair that and make it easier for customers to go in and out of the car wash area. And so we ultimately chose, as you know, to pursue general commercial for the entire subject property after consideration of more restrictive zoning classifications such as community commercial. There are a couple of reasons why we did so. First, Bucks desires for the community to still have that important automobile repair service that serves all of the residents. We heard during our two town hall meetings, the residents just thanked the management of Bucks and the local service repair technician who has been working on that property for over 30 years. Another employee there has worked for almost 40 years. And so that service, as you know, is a permitted use in general commercial, but it is not in community commercial. Also, the automobile repair service can only continue if that property is zoned GC with the existing grandfathered access points off of Dodge. And so that was the other concern of Bucks because if we ultimately went to try for community commercial with a conditional use permit to allow the automobile repair services, all of the access points off of Dodge, which have been grandfathered in, would be extremely problematic, if not impossible, to overcome. As a result, Bucks was ultimately faced with the decision of either shutting down the existing automobile repair service that so many of its neighbors enjoys or shutting off access off of Dodge. It was a lose-lose situation, which is why we are here before you today to respectfully request that you grant the zoning for the entire subject property to general commercial.
With the development...
With the development agreement as an amendment. And we are hopeful that that will alleviate the concerns both of the city and the Dundee Memorial Park Association and any other neighbors who may not be members of that association. And if the board feels that continued time to iron out the details of this proposed development agreement would be beneficial to all involved, we would certainly be approachable, I guess, with respect to laying this issue over a month in order to give everybody time to iron out the details and come with a workable compromise. I just want to mention that in case the board feels that that would be beneficial.
Could you just point out on your drawing there where the property line is that exists between the two properties?
Between the two properties is...
To the green?
I believe it is right, the green.
No, I'm saying between your two properties, the residential and the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So it crosses over, and so it shares, it's essentially right here.
So the current, the current drive to the drive-thru is on the commercial property?
Correct.
Not, it doesn't encroach on the residential?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, no, I want to make sure I understand that. The former, the former drive is on the existing commercial.
Yes, I'm sorry if I misunderstood your question.
Not to propose.
Yeah.
You're good.
I guess, yeah, you're right. That just was recently put in.
Yes.
What, just a couple of comments here. What it appears, from my standpoint, is the applicant knew the problems back in 2008, didn't go through the proper channels since 2008, went ahead and put this in without a permit, without permission from the city, without a permit from the city, and without getting the proper change of zoning. The second comment is, is the position that it puts the city in. What do we do as a planning department or a planning board when the next applicant comes along and says, "Well, I knew better, but I went ahead and did it anyways"? And the next applicant, and the next applicant. It's creating a problem for the planning department and the planning board here. I can appreciate the fact that you own the lot and you need a driveway and people are driving over it, but I hope you appreciate our position here on this.
Thank you. We certainly understand the sentiment that has been generated by Bucks' actions. And as Mr. Buchanan mentioned to you, he is here today to ask forgiveness. And I understand that a sorry can only go so far, but it is a very truthful, "I'm sorry, and it was a mistake." And so we are here today to simply try to find a resolution to the fact that the property owner was having his property damaged by, you know, his customers continuously utilizing this space and repairing the sod over and over. utilizing this space and repairing the sod over and over again, repairing sprinkler systems over and over again. And when it would rain, it would just create a muddy mess funneling onto 50th Street. And so, we're trying to, to find a workable solution. And to answer your question with respect to what do you do with the next applicant, I think our situation is a little bit unique. And of course, I'm, I'm a little biased as representative of Bucks, but I think it's a little unique in the sense that he is completely willing to tie his hands in perpetuity with respect to development of this property within the G.C. limits. I mean, it will prevent him from building a, from selling the property and someone else building a 10-story building. I mean, and that is, that has to say something.
I know about that. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Trenton, I guess here's, here's my perspective on this. And as background, I've been in commercial real estate, sales and leasing and development for 25 years. I think I've done eight transactions with Steve Buchanan. I've always represented the other side. So, we've gone head-to-head on a number of things and, but the one thing I can vouch for Steve Buchanan is, and he's a pretty humble guy, is, is he does what he says he's gonna do. He may have had a slip, and because I, I know him as a friend, I can say maybe that he switched his medications after 2008 or something like that. So, if not, we hope so. But anyway, I'm just kidding. But I can tell you this, that this is his first station when he was 19-years-old. He's a humble enough guy that you'll find him here a lot of times working on people's cars, working on customers' cars. You know, his shop has a radio show on KFAB, Mr. Mechanic, that's been longer than The Grow-Ma Show, which is my show. Not as good, but it's still valuable content. Yeah, I can't see him right now, which is good. But anyway, I can tell you this, that, that, this is something that, and I totally understand in the planning department, Mr. Fanslaw, and the planning department hates when I, when I do this, but at the same time, when I look at, look at things practically, and I totally understand that the planning department and some of this board's concern about creeping the zoning and getting into residential and things like that, this property will never be a house. It'll, it'll, it'll sit there if nothing else, and there'll be a fence up if we force them to put up a fence or get rid of the driveway or whatever. But I think that Ryan's offered to lay this over for all of us to review this development agreement and see if there's a way that we can tie the, tie his hands, tie the property's hands, not, you know, run with the property, so that solely is access to a car wash.
Trenton, do you wanna, you wanna hold on to that thought for, because we haven't heard from any other proponents?
Okay.
Or any opponents?
That's fine. You understand where I'm at.
Okay. Ryan, are you done, or?
I just have a couple of follow-up comments.
Go ahead.
With some items that were mentioned. So, with respect to the proposed site plan that is in your packet, there, Steve's right, there is an existing slatted fence that is on the retaining wall. And there's, there's just some spaced-out trees right now that don't really, don't really cover the adjacent property owner from the car wash lighting at night. And so, what this does is it provides a new fence, a new six-foot privacy fence that will prevent that lighting from, from going through. In addition to that, there is landscaping proposed on both the exterior and the interior of the fence to provide further barriers and allow the neighbors something a little bit more appealing to look at. And so, for, you know, all of these reasons, we do respectfully request that you grant the rezoning application subject to the development agreement that has been proposed.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Hal, were you coming up, or?
No.
All right. Any opponents that wish to speak? I'll close the public, okay?
Peter Manhart, 312 South 57th Street. I'm here on behalf of the Dundee Memorial Park Association. You've all asked really, I shouldn't tell you, you asked good questions, but you asked the same questions that we're asking. Obviously, Steve and Carl have been a fixture in this neighborhood for decades and can't tell you how many times all of the board has visited his, his gas station and his service station. We were a little surprised to hear that there, there wasn't a permit for the driveway. We all, and Steve remembers, you know, it's almost, we almost took it as a challenge to get into the car wash. And we saw all the people that didn't do it right. And so, as I got, I'm born and raised here, I kinda saw it as a challenge myself. So, now this whole schematic here is a little, I don't know, it's just my opinion, but it's a little, little much. But our biggest concern is not only the dangerous precedent that it sets, because we're in Dundee, this is not West Omaha with sprawling, sprawling real estate. This is Dundee where we do have a lot of commercial and residential very close together, and we have to live together harmoniously. So, we are concerned that it sets somewhat of a precedence. Also, we really didn't have a lot of information about the project. They have this development plan. The picture, I mean, when we saw the picture, I think it was a few weeks ago, we saw the picture the board did, we couldn't tell what changed. So, we, we were fine, I mean, we were completely fine with if the permit was pulled, if the city approved the driveway, then, you know, the neighbors don't like it, but you guys made that choice. So, we were okay with that, quite frankly. But when we learned that it wasn't pulled and that, you know, it probably could have been done better, and Steve, I think, admits that, we were a little put, put, put back as the Memorial Park Association, just because Steve's been very communicative with us with many things, so we were just a little surprised by that. Obviously, our biggest concern is that, I think Ryan sent me just an hour or so ago, the idea that we could possibly do a binding agreement that would say, you know, in perpetuity, like she mentioned. But really, I just wonder, and so does the board, I've just been texting, I mean, literally, the board has been texting me while we're sitting here. I'm glad we're kinda last, because the board actually got the time in, because we really haven't had an opportunity to sit down at a board meeting and see what the plan is and talk about it as a board. So, and they're just chiming in with different things about the idea that, you know, as long as both parties agree, that binding agreement is great, but when they don't, what happens? We've all seen, I mean, you can't help but see a Super Buc-E's on every, I mean, you're seeing 72nd and Pacific, you're seeing different locations. And I appreciate Steve that this is, this is, he's been here since he's 19. I mean, obviously, this means a lot more to him than anything else. And if it didn't change at all, I can't speak for the board, because again, we really haven't even had a chance to discuss the issue with the information that we've received today. But we would have to, you know, look at that. I, it's just very difficult to give an overriding approval of something that, one, we didn't know about, and, two, we're just learning, you know, Steve made the mistake of pouring that driveway. So, that's about all I have to say.
As the head of the board, if we voted to lay this over for a month, would you support that?
Yes, we would, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Jamie Rosales, 103 South 50th Avenue. And I kinda feel the skepticism along with the board here. I'm directly east of Buc-E's gas station. My house butts up to that. And I will say, when he has support from the neighbor to his south, just for the record, it's a former employee of his. I've been battling this or discussing this since '07, when he purchased the property. At that time, there was a wood wall, and people were still able to get into the car wash. All of us came home one day and the house was demolished. Pictures on the floor, all the trees knocked down. And that's the history of it. There's a lot of mistrust. He circumvented the zoning laws. What prevents him from circumventing his own covenants he would put on that property? And that's really the big issue here, is the trust, mistrust that we have currently. And I don't know, we've discussed it at one of his community meetings, just, by the way, there was two people at Thursday's meeting and one at Sunday's meeting. I just don't know if there's any trust left. He circumvented your own zoning laws in trying to ram it through here? What prevents him from circumventing his own covenants that he puts on that property? I do have a signatures for opposition from 50th Avenue and also 50th Street, if I can include that in the file.
Sure, bring him over.
Sir, can you point to your house?
On the, on the board there. Is that your house right next to the commercial building?
Yes, directly.
Oh, can you point to it with your finger, please?
My house would be right here.
You're gonna have to go over on the other map. There you go.
Just there.
Right behind here. That's 103.
Oh, so you're like on 51st or?
50th Ave.
Okay, gotcha.
50th Street and then 50th Ave.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Ronald Persley, and I'm at 114 South 50th Ave.
I couldn't hear your name, sir.
Oh, Rock Persley.
Okay.
And so, we've only moved into the neighborhood just in July, and chose Dundee because of the really established character of the neighborhood in Dundee. So, I don't have the, the history that a lot of people have with this project and their concerns with Mr. Buchanan. But I do have the concern about, and while I think it's wonderful that he's willing to do some covenants to protect further expansion of the property, I think when you look at this particular group doesn't provide a lot of protection. And although I'm not an attorney, I just don't really see, from my short time reading this document, any sort of long-term protection. I see some, you know, should-provide information to a future buyer, but no shalls. And I don't see any successors of interest at all clause that's very codified in this, this document as it is. And I would really much, very much like to encourage the board at least to, you know, at the very minimum, to delay any decisions today so that everything can be really fine-tuned with a protective covenant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Danae Danley. I live at 105 South 50th Avenue. Basically, my property is budding up to this property right here. I guess my greatest concern about this whole deal is that when I bought my house in 1994, that was a residential lot. It had a house and a garage on it. And in 2007, that just disappeared. The lot, all of a sudden, there was a five-foot retaining wall all the way across my backyard. The lot was raised five feet. At that point, we contacted the, once we figured out what was going on, we contacted the Planning Board, and they came out and prevented them from putting that driveway in at that time. So, since 2007, they've known that that driveway is not legal on that lot. My biggest concern is that my property value, you know, yes, it's now going to be adjacent to a commercial property. So, I'm not going to be able to realize the same amount and desirability when I go to resell my property. So, I don't know. It doesn't concern anybody else, but that piece concerns me. And also, you know, there's been privacy issues. Once they poured that driveway this year, I was getting lights through my house. They are working with us to try and block that, and I understand that. But I guess my biggest concern is, you know, what's gonna, how am I ever gonna get back that value to my property now that it's gonna be adjacent to a commercial property?
Thank you. Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional questions, comments? Trenton, I kinda cut you off a little bit earlier. Go ahead.
I'm used to it.
You're used to it, yeah.
I might just, if I might just...
If this second, I close the public hearing. If somebody wants to call Ryan back up, you're welcome to.
I think we've heard enough.
No, I might wanna call Steve back.
Do you have something new?
Okay.
Just to address a concern that might be, I mean, obvious to you all, but maybe not necessarily to the neighbors, with respect to the notice that the development agreement would be provided to future buyers after Buchanan Energy ultimately may, you know, decide to sell, which is highly unlikely at this point in time. But it would be recorded. And so, any future buyer of that property obviously would receive a title, title report, and this development agreement would end up showing up in the public title record, and they can pull it at the county courthouse in order to read the entirety of it. And we're certainly open to reviewing that development agreement to alleviate any concerns that it may, may present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna call Steve? No, no, not yet. So, first of all, Steve, you've done a great job building an enterprise and a franchise and creating jobs across the city, and I congratulate you very much for, for doing that. You've been very successful, what you've done. I'm having struggles with the permit issue with this, and I know, I know. But one of the first things that, you know, I've financed a lot of projects, one of the first things that have ever, anybody ever asks, either the architect asks, or the owner asks, or the contractor asks, is do we need to get permits? And that's what I'm struggling with. I mean, that was, there's always the need, you know that there's always a need to at least check to see if you need to get permits for this. So, I'm having real struggles with this. The other struggle I'm having with it is using a residential lot for a commercial drive, particularly in this area, really, I think, diminishes the character of the neighborhood. And so, I'm, I'm just having a difficult time. I understand the need, I truly do understand the need for that, but I'm really struggling with, with, with those two issues particularly. I don't know if a layover would make any difference or not, I don't care if we have one or not, but I don't know how we could reconcile this. And I don't know what the city's position would have been, but had the city, had you gone to the city for a recommendation or a permit initially, I don't know that it would have gotten approved back then anyway, because I don't know if it was the proper use for it. And I maybe, Eric, you're gonna address that as well in your commentary. So, I just wanted to comment. First of all, again, I just wanna congratulate you. You've done a great job in this city, building a great enterprise and franchise and creating jobs, and I really appreciate it, but I'm just struggling with this a little bit. Yeah, so, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Maybe we hear from the city.
Quite a bit, quite a bit there. Obviously, we have two related requests, amendment to the future land use for the residentially-zoned property to expand the office commercial, which currently sits on the, the Buc-E's commercial site with the building, to expand that boundary of the land use map to, to cover that residentially-zoned lot. So, that's the first request. Second request is the actual rezoning from R3 to G.C. for that, that southern portion. Similar to the requests 10, 10 years ago, although that was ultimately laid over, the language in our recommendation report at that time and our stance was that it should not be approved. There has been no change in that. We believe that expansion of commercial zoning to that southern lot, that is, that is a beginning of a process that we don't like to see. It can lead to destabilization of neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods. We've seen it in other locations in the city. We fought against other locations in the city, you know, and unfortunately, sometimes in the older part... in the older parts of town, when we have strip commercial, you know, we have residential adjacent to commercial, those two uses can coexist. But whenever you start creeping beyond that demarcation line, it, it can lead to problems. You know, property owners can, you know, with the belief that their home will someday be zoned commercially, or somebody's gonna buy theirs commercially, they may stop taking care of their property, not putting investment into the property. So just issues like that, that, that we see that it happens, you know? An example, in North Side of 88th and Center, for many years, we received multiple requests to rezone that to, to office commercial. Sorry, we don't have a map of that, but most of you are familiar with the site. Well, you know, we held the line on that and did not support that land use amendment. Well, ultimately, we got a nice product that fits the low-density residential, you know, and everybody always said, oh, we can't do this, we can't do that, you know, the zoning, it doesn't fit, it needs to be commercial. Well, it's a pretty good project that's gone through. Now, it's not exactly apples to apples here, but it's the same instance where expanding that office commercial designation, we definitely do not support that in this location and most locations when it comes up. We have multiple meetings on different sites throughout the city. This issue comes up all the time and, you know, so that being said, to get into some of the specifics, if a building permit was submitted for this driveway earlier this year, or the summer when it was, when it was built, no, it would not have been approved by any means. It doesn't have the appropriate zoning. So even though it's, it's just a driveway and, you know, there's no commercial structures that are being proposed, it's a part of the commercial business. It's viewed as part of that commercial operation. So it doesn't have the appropriate zoning for that driveway to be there. So, you know, I guess as far as the permit, that's, that would have been our stance. I think just because the driveway has been put in, you know, isn't justification for forgiveness, you know? I mean, there was, you know, there was mention that, you know, they couldn't prevent vehicles from coming onto their, their site or ruining sprinkler heads. There are other methods to prevent vehicles from coming onto that property. You could do landscape, you know, shrubs along that, you can do certain fencing's that would be allowed, that would prevent vehicles from crossing over into the residential property. I can't specifically comment on what's in the development agreement. I, I haven't had a chance to read through it. But, but frankly, that's not the department's, I, I don't, I think whatever is in that development agreement, we would maintain our stance that the rezoning and the land use amendment should be denied. There was mention, the site, yeah, it, it is a non-conforming site, the existing commercial operation. Obviously, it doesn't meet, you know, our current standards for, for car wash stacking or the access points and, you know, understand their position, how they wouldn't want to rezone it to, to CC zoning. Even if this request was to go to CC and, you know, open up the possibility to do a major amendment, to expand their site and to, to close some of that access points and things like that, we still don't support the expansion of the zoning. So I think that's about all I have. I don't know if you have any specific questions before I make the official recommendation, or I guess I'll state the recommendation.
You're gonna do agenda item number 10 first and?
Yes. Well, I guess let me touch a little bit, you know, if you see fit to, to layover the request, I mean, you definitely have that right. I don't, I don't know of, of anything that would change the city's perspective in recommendation, so, but that's up to you. So for agenda item number 10, the city recommends denial.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to layover agenda item number 10, case C318-234 for 30 days. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
No.
Pate?
No.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion to layover approved.
Do we wanna go with 18?
Yeah, for agenda item 18, for the rezoning, the city recommends denial.
I make a motion to layover case number C10-18-221, case 18, for 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Pate?
No.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion to layover approved.
Okay. Sure. Let's see. I think we're on a, I think we're on agenda item 21 here. That was taken off of?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna proceed to agenda item number 21, case C10-18-224. Applicant Chad Iker, this was on consent for approval, this was pulled off. The request is rezoning from AG to R2. Location, east of 216th Street and Greenbrier Drive. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jeff Elliott, 17007 Marcy Street, Omaha, here to represent Chad and Holly Iker. This piece of property, if you can put this up, is located just on the south side of the Greenbrier subdivision. This right here is Skyline Drive, so it's just west of Skyline Drive. The piece of property is just over 14 acres. The Ikers would like to build their home there, one single-family resident, residence. So we came to the department and asked what we need to do with a 14-acre piece of, piece of land. They have advised us that we need to do an administrative plat, which we have submitted to the department for their review. And the, the property is currently zoned ag. And the, the zoning around, as you can see, is R2. So they recommended that they rezone the property to R2. So that is the reason we're here before you today, to ask for your approval of rezoning from AG to R2. One single-family house, yes.
Is it all tree?
The, the replat would be one lot, so it's mostly trees, yes. And so, the, the home site is here on the east side of the property, so there'd be one driveway that meanders back to the home site. The trees would remain except for around the home site and for the, the drive, which I believe is a 15-foot wide drive.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any other proponents that wish to speak? May we hear from the opponents?
My name is Patrick Student. I'm on, here on behalf of myself and my wife. We live at 21520 Sky Ridge Plaza, and I've got copies, if I may approach the board, of what I wanna show. I have both in the handout and one full size. And I can make electrons available at will.
Patrick, do you have one to show? Do you wanna show one on the, you have one for the overhead? Okay.
Are you bordering the separate property or are you one property? I am one short property away. This is my property.
You point again, please?
The one that's outlined in blue.
Okay.
The parcel under question is also outlined in blue. And it's, I'm one property away either, well, one property away through the property of 21444 Sky Ridge Plaza. Just as an overview, the property is quite hilly. I've walked it in the past, and at times I wished I was a mountain goat. That's how steep it is in locations. My concern is not so much the rezoning of residential, but the increased water flow because, from the valley, which there's a major creek-like that's mostly dry, but after a very heavy rain, will flow water. And this is historical, this is before anything was done to it. And there was a old farm pond with about a four-foot retention pond draining this valley into the area. The water continues to flow, goes underground through a 30-inch corrugated metal pipe, comes up to my driveway, it goes through another 30-inch corrugated metal pipe that I extended 90 feet last year because I basically had a, a gully that was like this steep with walls like this, that was not safe to really get in and try to do any maintenance, so extended the culvert out and covered over. The concern is, is how much water? Because looking at the largest rainfall event that I've seen in like the past five years, that I could actually mark how high the water was flowing through the culvert, which got up to this point, which was basically four inches from the top. And basically through calculations, this gives me about 5.8% reserve capacity to take even a larger rain event. The 4.1-inch rain event we had in April of 16, I believe, did not overflow the culvert. And looking at the valley, I basically drain about everything from Greenbrier to Skyline and back down Chancer, somehow comes into my yard, back into this area. And that's approximately 80, 83 acres. I'm not saying, no, I got everything close, and I actually got a little bit more, so I'm just rounding down. The area that was controlled by the dam comes up to be about nine acres. I'm sorry for the hard-to-read approximate. I did this with the GIS site as opposed to doing like I did in the other one in PowerPoint and putting some nice yellow letters. The concern is, this, this dam has been changed, changed from a retention pond to a detention pond. And the last year rain events we had, including the big one we had in Omaha about a month ago, that gave some areas about eight to 10 inches, out where I was live, I measured just over an inch of rain in the three days total. And basically, that type of rain would not normally bring water down through the yard, but I had water flowing because this is allowing the water to run instead of retaining it for a while. My other concern is, coming out that second branch that was further east drains roughly this area. And work has been done, I don't, you know, it's, it's adding to the, the efficiency of flow, how much and all that, I, I don't know, but it is, is increasing. So my concern in getting rezoned are basically that by changing the retention pond to a detention pond, gives me about a 10% increase of water flow into my yard that historically was being retained by that farm pond. Also, any development concerning the driveway house or any outbuildings that would be further built, is gonna further increase runoff. I've only got about 5.8% additional capacity. And if you look at the, that area controlled by what was the dam, approximately nine acres out of 83, that's almost 11% increase in potential flow through the yard, which is now gonna start putting water over my driveway and potentially bringing water over what is, is the vacated Sky Ridge Road from the neighborhood 21444 over into my, over into my property going above ground instead of going through the 30-inch culvert that exists at that point. So, I guess in conclusion is my feel that in developing this, the detention pond needs to be changed back to a retention pond, and there needs to be design considerations to contain runoff to, to the pre-construction levels. Any questions, sir?
I don't have any. Any from the board?
I have more questions for the applicant. As far as?
Are there any? Are you done, Patrick?
That's, that is it, unless somebody has some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak?
My name is Kim Fossey, and my address is 21430 Sky Ridge Road. Not necessarily an opponent, but I do have questions that I would like addressed by the board before this is approved or denied. Originally, this, when this went on, my entire property is seven acres, and I share a border with the 21444 Sky Ridge Plaza. I am at the highest, one of the highest points, so I do not have runoff concerns. But my concern was when this property was originally put up for sale, it was a combined property, so the seven acres that borders mine was combined with the 14 acres that's in question today. And whether it was false advertising or true advertising, I don't know, but when they put it on the market, they advertised that it included undisturbed prairie. And this has now been disturbed, and I'm wondering if there were grading permits pulled and if that, if we could, if someone, again, it may be not a true claim, but if it was undisturbed prairie, that usually does, I believe, require special treatment. And so that, that would be one of my concerns, and otherwise, that was my only question.
Kim, Eric will address your points.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Why don't I bring Mr. Elliott up first?
You're, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you. How much impervious coverage are you adding with the house and the driveway?
The property's 14 acres total. I believe that we're adding less than an acre of impervious coverage.
And in your expertise as an engineer for longer than I've been alive, no, you're not that old. Just kidding. Have you, do you think it's gonna add? I mean, I'm, I'm not the expert, but, but the neighbor obviously put his facts down on paper and said, okay, here's where we're at. Do you, do you agree with his numbers, or do you think that there's more study that needs to be done?
I think the Ikers would be happy to do further study. The driveway that I mentioned runs across the drainage ways that Patrick mentioned, and Chad has no recollection of a dam being there, but with the driveway going across those drainage ways, in essence, it makes a dam. They are putting a culvert across that driveway, so it would allow water to flow through it. So we, we can study to see if, if it's releasing as much or, and in the, in the area of the first drainage that he mentioned on the west end, really, there's no disturbance happening other than the driveway going across the road. So the amount of impervious area being added there is really nothing other than the driveway. The, the second drainage way to the, further to the east would have their home rooftop and their driveway adjacent to their home added to it. And there, again, the, the driveway goes across that drainage way, creating a dam with a culvert. And we'd be happy to take a look at it to see if we're adding too.
So there might be, with, with the dam you're talking about, there might be less water?
There could be.
Okay.
And as we all know, over And as we all know, over the last number of months, the intensity of the rains that we've had are just, are very unusual for our area and very extreme, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Eric?
So the request before you, rezoning from AG to R2. The applicant came to us asking, you know, what was needed to do in order to build a new home. In order for a building permit to be taken out and issued, a property has to be platted into a buildable lot. This parcel has never gone through that process, so therefore, there is a need for an administrative subdivision. You know, due to the lack of infrastructure that would need to be put in place, such as streets, sewers, things like that, planning and Public Works determined that an administrative subdivision was appropriate for this site, being surrounded by mostly platted parcels on the north and east and west. The zoning needs to change because we cannot create a lot with the ag zoning designation because the site is 14 acres. Ag zoning requires a lot to be 20 acres in size. The area is designated as low-density residential within the Elkhorn Exurban Zone, so, you know, most of the zoning surrounding the property is zoned R2, so we advise the applicant to rezone to R2. Specifically for some of the drainage items, I'm not a trained engineer, so I can't really comment on, you know, the flow rates or anything like that that was presented to us. But there are not specific stormwater ordinances that specifically apply to single-family homes that you would see on a normal commercial multifamily development. You know, there's, when you have a commercial project or a larger intensity scale project, we have regulations that restrict the amount of runoff and things like that. So for single-family homes, there are just specific building code requirements that is factored in as far as, you know, drainage and erosion from one lot to adjacent lots. And you see that commonly when new subdivisions are being built. Sometimes there's silt fence issues when there's runoff and drainage and it's kind of that same idea, just on a large, much larger, single lot. As far as undisturbed prairie, I'm not aware of any designation for a specific prairie in this area. That would probably just have been real estate marketing that, you know, I always cringe when I drive by certain real estate signs and some of the things it says. So that would be my best guess, but we can always look into the information available that we have to look into that. If they want to call you up, sir, they can do that when I'm complete. I don't know if a grading permit has been issued or not. We can definitely look into that. That's administered through the Public Works Department, so that's not something that I usually access in my day-to-day operations. So with that being said, the applicant would be required to submit an acceptable administrative subdivision, or it sounds like perhaps it already has been. We have not yet had a chance to review that, so we will do that. Otherwise, we recommend approval of the rezoning.
Can we bring up Patrick?
Yes, you can. Patrick, we need your name and address again, please.
Patrick Student, representing myself and my applicant.
Beverly, 21520 Sky Ridge Plaza, Omaha. This is more of an informational comment. The area in question, I believe, is kind of where the house is being built. When I walked the land several years ago, trying to trace how the water flows into my yard, that really started after the Parks Department put the bike trail in along Sky Ridge Road. And getting up, and I remember climbing up through the woods and up the hills and all of a sudden, I just walked into the clearing, I'm going to say, you know, an acre or so just from an eyeball. That was high grass. There may have been one tree in the middle of it, but otherwise, this was just a wide-open clearing in the woods.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion? Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Just one comment, I think in the interest of good faith, if the landowner would consider looking into a drainage way study that might appease some of the neighbors as to what's being done, so I vote yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on, agenda item number 24, case C8-18-227, C10-18-235, applicant Nate Bus. This was on consent for approval. It requests approval of a special use permit to allow assisted living in a R5 district along with approval of an MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location northwest of 204th Street and George B. Lake Parkway. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Nate Bus. I'm with Olson Associates, 601 P Street in Lincoln, representing Age Mark Corporation. You've done a few of these, three of them in Lincoln, they have another one in Omaha at about 156 and Q in the Walnut Grove area. This is a project dedicated to memory care and skilled nursing, which falls under the semi-dependent and/or dependent living quarters. Get your bearings, 204th is over on this side, George B. Lake down on the south and 205th on the west side. You can see we've orientated all of our access and front doors, you know, away from residents and onto the main entrance road that is George B. Lake. The parking is slightly above what would be required for this, and that's just from an employee standpoint. Their, this is common layout for them is to kind of create these little parking trays and provide landscape islands. They're very big proponents on really kind of hiding, hiding that parking, hiding any trash enclosures. And with memory care, they like to give the sense of protection to the residents within the building. Off to the northwest over here, this is a large courtyard, we'll call it. It'll have kind of meandering walkways where employees can take residents out, usually similar to a lot of the facilities that I have worked with them on. It has ponds, walkways, landscaping, some of them even have a little putting green and little activities for every residence to do. Here, this little building here is mainly a storage shed, skinned the same way as the building, so it has the same look and blends into the building of stone siding. And it just houses the equipment to maintain the property and it also would have other items in there that, you know, they bring out for the residents. Off of George B. Lake is our main access drive. We worked with Public Works several months ago to identify this location away from 205th Street to maintain driveway clearances. And then it comes down into a drop-off lane at the front door. Flipping to some, I wanted to just show kind of what, what face, so really, this stone, this stone veneer face here is really the closest part of the building that would actually face residents along 205th. Beyond that, to the northwest, everything's within a fenced enclosure. It'd be a nice, a black picket-type fence, six foot tall. And a lot of this is complimentary to the neighborhood. Some of the comments, you know, that we've received from city initially are to increase the amount of trees because of the MCC overlay. When we did this landscape plan, the MCC was not already on it. We're requesting that to be applied to this property. And so that is, the 17 trees now, I believe, pretty much get doubled along 204th, along George B. Lake, and then again, along 205th. And we're fine with that, working with the developer to, again, even work on the north side. We've given the developer a landscape easement along that side to come in and do what he needs to do to make those north properties a marketable property. I believe that was even one of the comments in here was to provide some additional trees on that north side. Other than that, everything utilities are near here, not asking for any rezoning. This is a special permit within the R5 and allowed use. Single-story building, maximum height to the absolute peak is 22 foot, so we're, you know, looking at a sprawling, but it's a sprawling ranch in vertical scale. A lot of the houses around here, I believe, will be two-story type houses taller than this. With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Any other proponents that wish to speak? May we hear from the opponent? Opponents, I should say.
My name is Walter Pascoe. I live at 3730 South 205th Street, which is directly across from the development. We purchased our house, it was a model, in May, and no one had informed us that a healthcare facility or any type of business would be right across the street from where our house is. The concern that I have, my neighbor has, is the devaluation of our assets, basically. But when you look at the diagram, we weren't really shared any information regarding landscaping or fence. We'd like to see more landscaping. I don't really care to look out at that facility from the front of my house, but also the fact that a maintenance shed is on the west end, which is directly across the street from my house. And typically, what you find with maintenance sheds, I don't know if that's coming in okay...
Walter, give it a turn. There you go.
Yeah. Is, there's a lot of junk. It's a repository for mulch, for dirt, for equipment that lays outside that maintenance shed because it never has enough room. I have serious concerns that that shed is there directly across, and why shouldn't it be moved by the trash bin which is closest to Route 31? I see no reason why that should happen. My preference is that it doesn't go up, but it's probably going to, but I would like to see the maintenance shed moved so that we don't have to look at any equipment or trucks or anything else and the landscaping to be improved.
Can you show me back on the map where you said you'd like to see it moved?
Yeah, it's basically, the maintenance shed right now is on the west end of the property, which would be right here. And all we're doing is asking, please put it towards 31, where you store your trash. So that way, we don't have to look at mounds of trash, or rather, mulch or dirt or equipment sitting out there because they always fill up right quickly.
Thank you. Sir, when you bought your house, that big lot was there, what did you think was going to go there?
I thought it was going to be houses. There was weeds up there, probably two feet high. So I didn't see any boxes, but I figured there's probably boxes out there. I didn't walk it. But I was just surprised that myself and my neighbor, he purchased his model there also, and no one ever said it was for a business use or a 24-hour care facility. Frankly, had I been notified of that, I wouldn't have purchased the house, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Walter. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Bob Mormon. Live at 3720 floor, South 205th Street, actually right neighbor to Walter. Like he had said, we were not notified at the time we purchased our home that actually it was going to reside as a care facility across the street from us. Walter also mentioned the shelter that were, the storage shed that they're talking about is a huge issue for me because that's directly out my front window. The same thing when it comes to the gate or fence that's actually around the facility itself. I would actually propose that we actually increase that landscaping along that road because those homeowners, there are four of us that look directly onto that property before we even get into residential area. So if there's any way that we can actually increase that, that would be grateful, as well as moving that facility as far as the tool shed or whatever you want to call it to the opposite end of the facility.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Any other opponents? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. Nate, did you want to come up and...
Yeah, I may just answer...
Need your name and address again, please.
Nate Bus, 601 P Street with Olson Associates. I would say that usually we do our landscape plan and not to pump any other contractor up, but usually they turn this over to Lanahan and kind of let Lanahan have his day with this. So I believe that that's certainly something we can consider with adding more landscaping along that side, and we'll look at relocating that shed. That fence does sit back, I think shown on there, this is, that's our front yard, 25-foot front yard setback from the property line, so that fence is, that fence is a good 40 feet, you know, onto our property and will provide a good buffer there. I'd say we'd have at least two or three more trees just in that dashed red line based on the MCC comments. With the maintenance shed moving, and I, I'll check with them, usually they like it closer to the courtyard area, and I don't know if that, if it's something that we can, you know, maybe move northeast inside the fence and get more landscaping on that, on that west facade, if that would appease it. If it doesn't, if it doesn't functionally and operationally make sense to move to the east side, that would be my only, my only thing. So if it stays here, you know, we could, you know, more landscaping just on that face or move it even inside and so that it's inside the fence area, that'd be, that'd be my only thing. Usually, it's a function with that. And operationally, if it's out aways, it doesn't work for them.
Can you share your information with the neighbors? Afterwards?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think you did say earlier, though, that the maintenance shed was still going to have the same materials as the building, so from that perspective, it's distinguishable.
Right. It's actually very hard to see even on this. In fact, I don't know if it is on... It doesn't look like there's any direct west-facing elevation attached here, but yes, it is the same material.
All right, Nate, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions from the board over here from the city? Eric?
Sure. I don't have a lot to add. A lot of the items in the report have been addressed. There are a few additional landscaping items that we need added and modified, so a revised acceptable landscaping plan will be required before forwarding to city council. This use type is allowed within the R5 district, subject to approval of the special use permit process, obviously what the request is. I can say when the original platen rezoning came forward, the applicant materials had always indicated this to be an assisted living facility. You know, but at that time, they probably did not have an operator or a user, so they wouldn't have gone through that special use permit process until somebody, you know, comes forward to be able to do such as the one that we're seeing. So the MCC overlay is being applied to the property. Otherwise, all the materials of the building and proposed site plan are acceptable. If the maintenance shed needs to move in a different location, as long as it complies with the applicable building setbacks and those items, that would be acceptable to city staff as well. So... be acceptable to, to city staff as well. So the city recommends approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district and approval of the special use permit to allow assisted living in R five urban family residential district, subject to the seven conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of an MCC major commercial corridor overlay district and approval of a special use permit to allow assisted living in an R five urban family residential district, subject to the seven conditions in the department's recommendation report.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Maggie?
Yes.
Rose Ackers?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda item number twenty-five, case C eight dash eighteen dash two two eight. Applicant, Nikia Vassar-Bri, hope I said that right, requests approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in a R seven district. Location, forty-five forty-eight Bedford Avenue. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, hi. I am Nikia Vassar-Bri, four five four eight Bedford Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. And I am the administrator and owner of Bridging Hands LLC. Bridging Hands is a licensed assisted living facility, small group living, according to the planning department. We currently have eight residents. It's a six-bedroom facility. It's two residents to each room. We currently have two rooms that are not occupied, and I am trying to increase to the twelve, so I can occupy the other two rooms. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. It's my first.
That's all right.
Okay, so the, the women, it's all women that I have there. They all have mild psychosis, schizophrenia. Their daily activities, Monday through Friday, they belong to adult day program. They go, they pick them up maybe about nine o'clock in the morning, and they stay until three P. M. Most of them are wards of, or on the board of mental health. They are, they have state-appointed guardians, because they are not able to control their funds. They do not drive. I know parking is the issue for the increase. None of my residents have driver's license at this time. They are all approved for Intellivite, which is through Medicaid, where they get rights to their psych appointments, doctor's appointments, things like that. Most of them don't have families, unfortunately. A lot of my referrals come from mental health respite, which is through Salvation Army. They're able to stay there maybe thirty days, and then they have to be referred out to some type of program. Some of my residents come from Emmanuel University psychiatric ward, but like I said, most of them come from mental health respite. And let's see, what else? I did get, when I was licensed, one of the requirements is to have a licensed architect to come out to make sure that, you know, you have the available space for each and every resident. So I did have a licensed architect come out. Rod Lockamer came out and, you know, everything was squared away and everything was given to the state of Nebraska. And that's how, you know, I became licensed. So if you have any other questions for me, I can answer them.
Supervision you have.
Facility.
There is one, one med aid on shift at each time.
And if you got the increase, you still only have one for twelve people?
For twelve. Yes. Yep. You still have one for twelve people. Yeah.
And what kind of conversations have you had with the neighbors?
Um, well, actually, they called me. I guess once I applied for this, they called me to ask me in regards to the increase and if, you know, there were sex offenders and things of that, that nature. They were unaware that I already had a small group living there. So they were like, wow, we didn't even know, you know, what that was, we, you know, because we were so under the radar. Like I said, a lot of the women, during the day, they're gone, you know, for today programs. So when they come home in the evening time, you know, we just do activities and they eat. And then they normally take their, their night meds around six P. M., seven P. M., and they're off to bed. So they didn't have any problems with it at all.
What's the square footage of the home they, they're in? Do you know?
No, I don't know the entire square footage. I have like a completion certificate from the architect, maybe. I don't know. It could be on, do you want me to put this up here? Maybe it could be.
There you go.
Let's see.
Hmm? I see that. I'm just wondering what, what records that is. I mean, if that's from the assessor's website, it's wrong sometimes, so.
Okay. I don't know if that shows like a square footage of each room and.
Yeah, I can't see it. Do you see the average length of stay is thirty days?
No, no, no. That's with MHR respite, who refers a lot of the, the residents to me, is thirty days. Because normally, they're homeless. And so they stay at MHR respite thirty days. Sometimes they give them a, a layover, depending if they find somewhere to stay. So if they find.
What's your average stay?
My average stay is longevity. They can stay however long they want. I don't have a cap on how long they stay at all.
Is it as long as the funding comes in, or?
Yes.
You're funded by the state, I assume?
Yes, I am. No, 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 I'm sorry. They receive general assistance or social security. Yes.
Any other questions from Nikia? Thank you, Nikia.
Okay.
You did very well.
I did. Thank you. I was so nervous.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. May we hear from the city?
Sure. So as Nikia mentioned, increase from currently eight residents to twelve. So that kicks you from the small group living, which is permitted use, into the large group living for the special use permit request. Anytime there is a large group living application, our zoning code has a large list of several items that need to be provided. We are lacking a few of those items. Among the couple of issues that, that do bring us concern is there's a requirement for a minimum of two hundred square feet must be provided in the dwelling unit for each resident. Our report indicates that records indicate a total of about fourteen hundred square foot. I don't specifically know, and I can confirm, but my suspicion is if that information wasn't provided to us, then that was information taken from Douglas County Assessor's information. But needless to say, I mean, it's, that's definitely below the required twenty-four hundred square feet.
What's the cutoff between small and large?
You're allowed up to eight individuals for small group.
So nine puts you in large.
Nine puts you in large group. Yeah. There are certain limitations in residential zoning about how many residents and whatnot, but twelve isn't a loud number, provided it meets all the other criteria. One of the other items is parking concerns. You know, she mentioned that the residents don't have cars and there's not a lot of traffic. And, you know, I understand that. You know, there's definitely non-compliant parking as it is right now. Our recommendation is for denial. We would not be opposed to a layover if the applicant wants to sit down and meet with us or, or provide those additional information, you know, the square footage. You know, perhaps there could be some common ground about the number of residents. I don't know. We'd have to talk about that internally. You know, I don't know if we could get to a point where we'd support twelve or not. But sometimes with use permits, you could provision it to this applicant only. You know, I mean, there would still be a need to go to the zoning board of appeals, if that's an option. I'm just throwing that out there. That our official recommendation is denial, but we would not be opposed to a layover to have those further discussions.
Nikia, can you come back up?
To get additional information.
Were you done?
Sure. So my big concern is the, the size of the house versus the occupancy. There's a reason why they, they have the stipulated two hundred feet per, per person. What we're talking about is, given, going from eight to twelve is a big number. Would you consider something less than twelve and, and, and more than eight?
Sure. That's fine. I don't know. I should have, and I should have had Rod give me the exact square footage of that. I know it's more important.
What I'd like to, where I think this is heading, and instead of a denial, which the city is recommending, if, if one of us proposed a layover, that way you'll have time to meet with them, and maybe there's a, a common ground or medium, you know, some kind of, maybe, maybe it's nine or ten or eleven or something. But, but if this is the, the house, it's, it's pretty tight quarters. And so would you, you'd, I assume you'd rather have a layover than a denial?
Of course. Yeah. That'd be great.
Okay. So I, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
I just wanna say, I, I appreciate the service that you're providing. And I mean, I, I would support a layover because I wanna make sure that we're getting the correct numbers and that if there is a way to work with you, that we do so, because I, I think it's a valuable service that our community needs. And I'd hate to lose out on a, on a technicality that may be wrong. So.
I would also just comment that on our, our report here, there's eleven items that, that need to be addressed in, in your application, that that information hasn't been provided. And reading through them, they don't look like they're challenging, that they would be something you could fill in. So again, a layover would give you the opportunity to maximize your application under their guidance on the information that they need to properly evaluate your proposal.
Okay. That's awesome. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Even though Eric looks really intimidating, he's actually one of the next.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion for layover. Second. For thirty days?
Until they, until it works out.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Will you record the vote?
Rose Ackers?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved to layover.
What'd you have?
So, I'm sorry. But so what's next?
Get in contact with Eric.
Contact Eric.
And go over to your architect and your other consultants to, to make sure that those questions are answered.
Okay.
All right. I think it's our final.
Twenty-six, twenty-five?
Item, agenda item number twenty-six, case C eight dash eighteen dash two twenty-nine. Applicant, Render Group LLC, doing business as Comfort Care. Request approval of special use permit to allow large group living in a R one district. Location, twenty-three fifteen South one sixty-eighth Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, I'm Jill McMahon, twenty-three fifteen South one hundred and sixty-eighth Street, and I'm with Comfort Care Homes. And we, like Nikia, are the memory care, residential memory care. Thank you already for approving the addition of our four-bedroom spaces in our basement. My only reason for staying was I just had a question about, I, I see that our condition of approval is to close the north entrance of our U Drive on one hundred and sixty-eighth Street. And I just wanted to know if there is a process to discuss or revisit that issue, or any option to consider closing the south entrance instead of the north. The north entrance is directly across from Lakeside Hospital, and there's a stoplight there. So to me, it makes sense for our caregivers, our visitors, our ambulances, our wheelchair transport vehicles and that, too, for their safety, to be able to use the end of the driveway that has the stoplight, rather than coming off of one hundred and sixty-eighth, where there's no turn lanes and the traffic moves very, very rapidly on one hundred and sixty-eighth. There's a lot of congestion right at that corner. And I thought maybe that was your thought with closing that, because of the entrance to Lakeside Hospital there. There's always a lot of traffic. But anyway, I just wondered if there, I don't know the process. I've never done this before, so.
Jill, before you, in just a second here, I'm gonna call Ryan up from the city traffic. So he can address that point for you.
Okay. Thank you.
And you're not going anywhere, of course. So take a seat, and I'll get Ryan up here in just a second.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else. So there's no other proponents, no opponents? Close the public hearing. Ryan, will you come up, please, as our traffic engineer, transportation engineer?
Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department.
You wanna address the points that, or the question that Jill had?
Yeah. So generally speaking, in West Omaha, we, in the recent past twenty to twenty-five years, we've, we have certain access restrictions placed on the busiest streets, the arterial streets, so your Pacific Center, one hundred and sixty-eighth, one hundred and forty-fourth. The development pattern that is contemplated in the master plan and is in conformance with good practices with traffic engineering is to prohibit direct access from any lot onto those major streets. And to instead have several controlled public street intersections, which then branch out and form your local streets, that's where the driveways are most appropriate. The, the research is clear that the more driveways you have along a given stretch of, of a roadway segment, the less safe it's going to be, that you're gonna see more crashes. So by consolidating, it helps maximize the safety and operational traffic characteristics of, along those major streets. So with that in mind, that's why we have those prohibitions and don't permit driveways, like you see in the older parts of town. It's just a completely different way of setting up, setting up the city, generally speaking. That being said, there are a number of cases where maybe prior approvals were given, maybe it was before the master plan adopted those policies, maybe it was done under different jurisdiction. But you have kinda these holdout properties where they have those direct accesses. And, and until anything is brought to the city, nothing is really going to change or continue to, to be allowed to have those accesses and under the grandfather-type scenario. Unfortunately, what happens a lot of times is, or what had happened a lot of times in, in the city's history, something like this, where you see the properties surrounding these three that have the direct access there were platted with no opportunity for any local street connection to be made internally to these streets. For example, one hundred and sixty-seventh Street on this exhibit. So granted, there's, there's really nothing that's ever, that it could ever be done to eliminate access from these three properties, two hundred and sixty-eighth Street. But that being said, as, as in this case and in others, when, when certain things are brought to the city and kinda elevated to the level of review, for example, special use permit, that's our opportunity to at least make some marginal improvements to, to help facilitate a little bit safer traffic in the area for, for the vehicles, not just the ones accessing these driveways, but generally just that happen to be driving past and are indirectly impacted. So that all being said, that's kinda the background. In this specific case, a, a right-in, right-out driveway is generally going to cause less conflict. There's less conflict points, signaled or otherwise, than a full movement access. So that was kinda the right, the thinking behind the recommendation of those two driveways. The one that would operate more safely and have fewer conflict points would be the one on the south. I guess I'll point to it here. So if this driveway were to remain as a right-in, right-out access, that was kinda the department's thinking and making that recommendation, as opposed to maintaining this one.
What is the?
One hundred and sixty-eighth is, is, is planned for expansion.
That's correct.
Next year? That stretch?
I'm not aware of the current, but it, it is forthcoming in the, in the near future.
So do you know what impact that expansion will have on those properties there that have that at direct access up one hundred and sixty?
There will be some reconstruction, obviously, because the, the width of one hundred and sixty-eighth, obviously, is going to increase with new number of lanes and a reconstructed traffic signal. So I was trying to actually pull that up before I came up here. I didn't, I wasn't able to locate it. So I don't have that information in front of me. So generally speaking, there would be a change. I, and I don't know if that would.
I'm just wondering if they're gonna be able to go north or south out of those drives once under.
once 168th Street is.
Well, and to be clear, you know, granted, there's a trade-off. If you restrict an access to right-in, right-out, that means it can be more circuitous to, as you leave or arrive, you have to, you know, plan out your trip and come from different directions. And that's kind of the balance of those kind of competing interests is maybe, yes, there's a bigger impact toward, to the property owner, but in the name, it's in the name of safety and operational benefits.
Right, I guess I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't understand. I'm up on North 168th, so I know it's going to happen down here eventually. It's going to be an island, and so then the right-in, right-out becomes truly a right-in, right-out. And so I don't quite follow the logic why that, when it coincides almost perfectly with that Lakeside Hills Plaza, and I believe there's a light there, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So then it becomes a lighted access onto that road. So I don't quite understand why that would be less safe than.
It's a great question. It's going to be, getting a little abstract, but traffic signals are not the end-all, be-all as far as safety. There are certain things that they're very good at resolving and preventing from a safety standpoint, but they also introduce other problems. So everything that we do in the traffic engineering world is a balancing act. If you think about why we don't just put a traffic signal at every intersection, think about all the free-flowing traffic on 168th Street. If all it takes is one car from a side street to trigger a red light, and then you have, you have red lights for all those, the traffic, north and south, thousands of vehicles a day, just for the benefit of one or two cars, that causes friction. You can cause rear-end crashes. So that's kind of the thinking is, anytime we can eliminate those types of unwarranted approaches, there's a benefit, you know, and again, it's a balance. It's, yes, it would be more convenient to get in and out of this site on that north driveway, but now you're stopping people, a lot of people, just for the benefit of a handful of cars a day, as opposed to the west leg, where there's a ton of traffic that goes in and out of there. So there is a benefit overall towards keeping that west leg open. So a T-intersection where the east leg would be completely closed off would function more efficiently and more safely than a four-way intersection, even if it's just to serve a few handful of cars from the east leg.
In the short term.
I don't understand what you said. I don't know if I agree. Yeah.
In the short term, Ryan, the south entrance, that's going to be open. What's to make that a right-in, right-out?
In the short term, nothing. It's kind of like a lot of, like our one-eighth mile right-in, right-outs in the commercial areas that we approve. Those are de facto full movements for the time being, and that's just accepted everywhere in West Omaha. Eventually, though, as the.
Yeah, without an island.
Exactly. The raised median will ultimately make that a right-in, right-out. That's correct.
In the short term, would it be, would it be, you may not be able to answer this. Would it be safer to use the north in, at that intersection than to use that south where you're not, nobody has to go along with the right-in, right-out? They could turn left, you know, backup traffic coming from the north headed south, stop, you know, going to turn in. Would it be safer in the short term to have the north entrance?
Potentially. I mean, you have to, you have to acknowledge that there's going to be queuing to the northbound. When there's a red light, there's going to be cars sitting there, and it would be better for someone to make a left from a green signal than it would be trying to fight against a queue. So that's one consideration as an interim condition. So maybe potentially it would be, close the north access upon future improvements or something like that. I guess, based on the questions I'm hearing, I don't have all of the information in front of me. I guess if the board would want to consider laying this over so we could coordinate further with the applicant, further with the project manager on the 168th Street project. If that's something the applicant would be agreeable to, we'd be happy to continue those conversations and see if there's maybe an alternate arrangement that could be made or in light of more information.
We've all got our opinions, but we're not an engineer, I mean, the transportation engineer for the city of Omaha. And you have to make those decisions and live with them. And so it might be best if we have a little further discussion, maybe.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. Just, you know, common sense just tells me, and again, I appreciate your comments there, but common sense just tells me that, you know, you keep that north access there, if you can at all. I don't know how much that will really affect traffic. I don't know how many cars you get a day there, I mean, in your.
You know, probably 10 to 15.
Come on, come on up.
Jill, give your name and address again, please.
Jill McMahon, Comfort Care Homes, 2315 South 168th Street. All our emergency vehicles come from the north.
How often do you have emergency vehicles?
Hopefully, not very often, but it does occur. All our residents are, you know, 80 to 100 years old. So very fragile. So we have wheelchair transport vans. Fire, we are hooked into the fire department, so anytime the alarm goes off, they come. And then, you know, also the ambulance. It's all come from the north. So if they come from the north and have to wait to try to get into that, to make a left turn into that RU Drive, they generally, you know, then they're going to have to figure out a way to turn around in RU Drive, back, back out on 168th, and make a turnaround to go across the street to Lakeside, where right now they can just go right through the light, so.
That's a good point.
And it's going to get worse if they add an island there.
In the future, when the island comes, then they won't even be able to do that at all. They have to go all the way down the center and come back.
Well, I think, I think it'd be advisable to lay it over if we can at all, so that we can maybe work out some of these logistics, again, to see if there's a compromise that will work in this situation.
Even if it could be maybe tabled or something until we really understand how the expansion's going to be right there, because I know that's going to affect this a lot, too.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You made a comment about, thank you for approving. The whole thing is laid over, if we lay it over. So you can't expand your facility until.
We haven't approved anything.
Yeah, just so you're clear.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
For 30 days.
Yeah, I didn't know what that all meant, but I just knew that I wanted to say something, so I didn't want to stay on that approval list and walk out without talking about this.
Yeah, I think it's wise to do that. On this particular issue, to lay that over and try to get that figured out because of the unique circumstances. Just so you're clear, though, that approval is also laid over, so.
That's fine. Yeah, this is, you know, this, really, it's two different issues.
Right, it is.
This, our four expansion won't affect this at all.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, thank you, Ryan, for. I guess we'll hear from the city's recommendation, and then we'll take a motion, it sounds like, for a layover.
Yeah, so hang around, Jill, for one minute longer here. Yeah, specifically, the removal of the access is within condition number one, so we definitely want to make sure that that's worked out, if that can be modified or if that will remain. So, you know, we're definitely supportive of the layover. There are a few other just informational items that we would need, you know, if this was, if it was approved today and it went to city council, we would need those items before city council. So while you're working with Public Works on the access drive, if you could get us those additional items, that'd be great, you know, so we can take a look at that. Yeah, just coordinate with us in the next few days. Sure, you can see me afterwards, and you can get whatever to us that you have. But good job staying around, you know, so many people don't know what their conditions are, and then they realize later on, so I'm glad you stayed.
Oh, they're going to get you out of here.
Okay.
Get out of here.
Good job filling in. You know, so our official recommendation was for approval, but we're acceptable to the layover.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move for layover for 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Layover approved.
Okay. I think that was the last item on our agenda. The minutes are being amended, and so we'll, we won't take any motion on the minutes this month. Next month, we'll approve or take a look at the minutes. Do we have an adjournment motion?
Adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved for 30.